We shall call to order the Village of Oxford Planning Commission meeting on this day, Tuesday, October 21st at 7:00 PM.
Let's rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, a roll call vote, please.
Here.
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 Thank you.
Based on precedence, do I have a motion to excuse the absence of Regina Noack and CJ Gosdor?
Do they have approval, or did they?
No.
They're normally handled.
It's either yes or no, based on, if I may, based on precedence, there was, fortunately, you were an example due to miscommunication, but we were reminded that there was a need for a motion to accept a non-excused absence. If it becomes a repeat theme, then we as a commission have to discuss that.
Unless I'm mistaken.
I guess I'll make a motion to accept an unacknowledged absence for CJ Gosdor and Regina Noack.
Port.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, all right. Excused absences for those two commissioners. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda for this evening dated October 21st?
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
One quick question, just the date at the top.
Yeah.
Thank you. I'll second that with the...
I think we then need a, we actually need a redefined motion. So with that being said, I will make a motion to approve the agenda October 21st, 2025, with a correction to the date to October 21st, 2025.
Port.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda approved. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes for September 16th, 2025?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes dated September 16th.
And a second?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Do we have any correspondence? I, for the record, will make a statement to welcome Mr. David Wagner to the Village of Oxford Planning Commission.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Call to public, anyone? I believe you're here for the main event, so we'll then move on to the next item, which is a public hearing, and there is none scheduled. So we now move to a sign review for First Choice Urgent Care located at 72 South Washington. Based on the meeting minutes, it's my understanding this was discussed at that time and has been brought back based on some revisions made. Mario, if I may ask for you to summarize your findings of the resubmission?
Yes, so the applicant itself, as we mentioned, would have been resubmitted, so based on discussions with the applicant, they're actually requesting now to install two internally illuminated wall signs on the western front of the building. And this is because they have indicated there are two separate businesses that are operating within these units. So each business then is permitted to have one wall sign for each business. So before you tonight is this sign design review, because as required by the zoning ordinance, any internally illuminated signs in C1 corridor zoning district receives special, have to receive the design approval from the planning commission. So you have the graphic in front of you that displays the sign, that these signs are proposed to include channel cut acrylic box letters with internal LEDs that project light forward. In addition to that, the first sign, the First Choice sign includes a round logo in addition to the channel cut letters for that particular business, while the urgent care is strictly just a brighter configuration that are red. So these design materials, you know, for channel cut letter signs, you know, they're contemporary, they're the standard businesses that come out. The benefit is they do provide depth and dimension against this building surface. So the style is conventional, but it is of higher quality than if this were just a standard box sign. So they do appear, you know, pretty attractive for a mod for bottoming standards. And then these proposed sign letters, as being channel cut, will have minimal light transmission due to the primary use of a darker color for the red for the urgent care and the black for the First Choice. We do note that there is a round logo for the First Choice and has dark letters against a white background. And so in theory, there's a potential to allow for a brighter light level transmission. However, we just note that if the background color were a dark color and then the text was the lighter color, then the light transmission would also be limited, and it also created a pretty attractive contrast for the white text on the black background, or dark background. And as we have our normal process, we're dealing with internally illuminated signage, there's equipment that could be installed to automatically control the luminance levels. So in the end, if the planning commission determines that the channel cut letter sign is compatible with building style in this section of downtown, we would recommend granting approval. The planning commission, we wish to require the logo colors be inverted to minimize light transmission and also the installation of a photometric sensor with automatic dimmer control to ensure luminance levels are controlled.
Thanks, Mario.
Any questions? When you want.
Before we get to questions, I like to call a point of order to acknowledge the presence of Regina and amend then the previously approved motion for an excused absence. Thank you for joining us.
Great.
So let's open it up for questions now.
When you say inverted, what colors are changing to what? Just to be clear.
Well, it's just a suggestion, but when you have the white logo and then the black letters, then that would allow for a lot more light transmission, in theory. But if the logo itself was black and just white text, then the light transmission would only go through the text. So it's just an option. Will you consider that on larger signs? There's some box signs in the past in which, like the entire box space was white
Right.
with limited black letters, and that actually was suggested and the applicant did switch them, basically. So there's on a blue-black, blue background with white letters.
So it's more the potential that it's too light, or?
Right, yeah.
Okay, so it's...
Obviously, it's more of an issue when it's a larger sign.
Right.
This is a smaller logo.
Yeah.
So whether that's going to be obtrusive or not, you know, that's a decision the planning commission will make whether it's necessary to switch it or not.
Okay, thank you.
Mario, in your summary in the first paragraph, you've mentioned that there are two separate businesses operating within the units at this address and that the shared unit has 80 feet of building frontage. So what, it's a little confusing to me, so two separate businesses, but there's a shared unit?
So because the way their unit is configured, they have one entry door, and then there's, within the configuration of the interior of the business, there's two separate businesses. So rather than having a party wall that separates the businesses completely and they're like independent of each other in the interior, and having two separate outside doors, which is, you know, if they were two completely unassociating businesses. In this case, they have one common door to enter to have the two businesses inside. So if one of the businesses were to leave, then the signage would have to come out.
One of the suites, so they occupy two suites, in theory.
In theory, right.
Yes, okay.
It's just that they choose, instead of having two independent doors, they're choosing to share one common entry.
Questions?
Mr. Wagner?
The signs themselves, they appear to be compliant with the ordinance, is that correct? The existing ordinance?
Yes, that's correct. And so the issue here is, while their location and quantity are appropriate now, and any compliance with the ordinance, the ordinance has required internal illumination in the downtown to be reviewed for their design.
Which will be a second point of discussion later in the agenda.
Yeah.
That's a lot greater than the ordinance that is in existence.
Correct. Yes, Leslie.
Mario or the applicant, do you know what the square, what the area of that circular logo is?
Thirty-six inches.
Pardon me?
Thirty-six inches, run.
Thirty-six inches by thirty-six inches? So do you know what that square, I mean, that's for a square, so I'm just curious.
Ninety-four feet.
Yep.
We measure, if you draw a square around it, whether it's weighty or circular motion, you know, or the dimensions derived is positive, and then measure, if there's gas in them, we don't break that gap out.
No, I understand for the ordinance, but I was curious about the light emission, the amount of surface that's actually white, that could, you know, emit light, that was the reason I asked.
You'd get three quadrants, you'd put ten pi or something like that.
Well, so I was hoping someone else, like anyone here an engineer or...
Three point one four gives circumference. Three point one four, it'll give you circumference.
Yes.
So it's roughly nine square feet. It's not a real big area, it's pretty small, and we are putting a full white print on top of it, so instead of having just typical white acrylic, it does have a white biographic on top printed with those graphics, so it does cut back light as well. So with the 36-inch circumference, it has, or diameter?
Area, yes.
Yeah, 36-inch diameter, one and a half inch radius, so that equals seven square feet.
Okay, thank you. That helps, thank you.
I can only do three point one four. More digits would be fine.
It's Ask Chat GPT, it'll figure it out for us.
It'll be for lottery numbers, Mr. Wagner.
So I'd just like to make some comments that I have related to it. Both of the designs now fit within our ordinance and what is allowed there. As far as with the channel cut letters and basically what Mario has advised as far as the logo letters inverted, I think that's up to, my personal thing is it's up to the applicant to choose which one they like. The thing that, once again, we have here is that if they're too bright, once again, we have the photometric sensors to then allow it to be turned down should it need to be. So from what I see, it all fits into the signs, and I'm good and happy with what they've come up with.
Any further comments?
Did the signs have photometric sensors in them?
I think you guys are referring to a dimmer control.
A dimmer control.
Yeah, so the photo sensor would be an on/off, but dimmer control would align separate light.
And that's part of your design?
We could put a dimmer control on it.
Justin?
So in this, this is part of, so every time we have an internal illuminated sign, we typically have been putting the same and using the same terminology. I'm saying photometric sensor with a automatic dimmer control module, which is, that's part of the recommendation. So maybe I wasn't completely always thorough with what I meant by that, but that's seeing it all the time, and every time we see that, that's what I did mean.
Then if you want to elaborate in a motion based on, or does anyone have a motion now on this? If not, I can make one.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the signs for 72 South Washington Street based on the recommendations outlined by our memo dated October 15th with recommendations outlining the photometric sensors with automatic dimmer controls.
I'll support.
Madam Secretary, roll call vote, please.
Okay. You know where? Allen?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Schultz?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
And...
Yes. Great.
Twice the price for double the signs, so.
Sure.
Thank you.
Have wonderful weekend.
Yeah.
And thank you for serving the community. I think it's a need that we need, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Me too.
Okay, let us resurrect, if I may, the discussion on our sign ordinance amendments. As we recall or attempt to recall what was discussed earlier this year, or to recap the scope and intent, some of our comments before for the better part of three years, maybe longer, since at least I've been a part of Justin longer for you. It seems that these types of applications coming through for planning commission review, there was a repeat theme in which we would approve an internally illuminated sign contingent upon a recommendation from the McKenna Group to install a dimmer switch to ensure the illumination does not exceed, is it 100 candela per meter squared? So as a result, there was a past suggestion to revisit the sign ordinance a few years back. We're now resurrecting that as a part of our, say, annual objective in reviewing ordinances that may be outdated and can help streamline the applicants where our review doesn't need to become an administrative nightmare. Just anything else to recap? Does that bring us?
That brings us right up to speed, yes.
Okay. Mario, you had presented us with some recommended amendments a few months back. I believe we, as a commission, felt there was a need to take another look to reword or to make some amendments, maybe benchmark other local municipalities and how they are treating sign ordinances. Can you walk us through why you prepared for another review or amendment?
Well, before you, is the actual original language that we discussed initially back in May-June, June, I think.
We'll call it June.
And so apologies for that, but I, since it had been a little while, I wanted to make sure that any revisions addressed your previous issues. So we were trying, because I also believe that there were other discussions we had that might necessitate adding more revised language to the ordinance. But to go back to the original question, I was trying to recall, based on the proposed text, what was needed to be revised, because my notes for that indicate, let me get back to them. You know, you had, there was some concern that the interpretation of the design by the zoning administrator might be a little bit too subjective.
Mm-hmm.
And then, I get, oh, the possibility to also include language that said to either emphasize or promote, or I don't know if it got to the point of requiring channel cut letters in the core instead of box letters. So I wanted, so basically tonight I wanted to get a definitive direction from you as to what amendments to make, so that at the very next meeting, we can have revised text that'll reflect your direction.
Go ahead, Regina.
Couple of questions. Can you define the type of signs? Like, when you say channel cut or spots, like, just so we can kind of, you have it on the record and explain it for accountants. I kind of know what you're talking about, but like, if we could kind of get that, I think that would be also helpful.
And as I think about it, the zoning ordinance does have definitions within the signage chapter.
Okay.
So it would probably be appropriate to add those definitions to the signs as well.
Right.
So for example, channel cut letters are basically individual...
Letters.
Yeah, individual shapes that represent letters or symbols or numbers, mount, as the sign people indicate, joke, correct me if I'm wrong, but individual letters mounted on a raceway or a backing track. So that way it can be mounted uniformly to a wall. So that's a channel cut letter, and then a box sign is simply a box shape, metal or rigid frame that has a uniform face, typically acrylic, that allows for light, that allows for the mounting of symbols and text. So those are the two main ones that we've been seeing lately.
For example, if that TD had white letters on it, lit it inside, that would be a box sign. Now they can have a little shape differentiation to the two, but the absolute, like the urgent care, it's an individual letter.
Yeah.
Lit it, so lit up inside its own.
So I...
These are a little costlier, but they look nicer, you know?
Right, because I know that, you know, we had discussed, you know, at the last meeting, it's like, okay, well, what is the difference and, you know, in the grand scheme of things, is there really that big of a difference between, you know, this is what you get if you have a box sign, and this is what you have if you have the channel cut? Because in theory, this, you know, what we had talked, like what the square footage of the actual illumination is. So as much as I don't want to, I don't want to get overly nitty gritty or technical on it, I definitely do think, you know, taking this all into consideration that a box sign is just, in general, is just going to be bigger because, but we're also judging these channel cut ones in the same way, and the same illumination, and the same size, regardless of the negative space that it has. And so I just, I think that this would be something that I think is important for us to discuss, just because I think that's exactly what they had ran into with this last applicant, where it's like, okay, in the grand scheme of things, the square footage was of the letters itself, if you did the math for your GEMT.
We don't measure that.
Well, I understand, but I think, you know, especially when we start talking about, like, oh, we need, you know, what do you call it, the light sensitivity and those kind of things, like, well, we do that because we don't, we don't want so much brightness, but is this something that, I don't want to have, you know, if you do this kind of sign, you get this, or if this kind of sign, you do that, but I do think that we maybe take that into consideration because it's, you know, sometimes something bigger can seem smaller when it comes to the negative space. Do you understand what I mean?
Mario?
To be honest, no.
No.
I would not, also, I would not agree, no.
Okay, I just, just a question, because I thought that's kind of where you were going with the last meeting, where it's like, well, the square footage of the brightness is still within that.
It had nothing to do with the brightness, it had to do all about the square.
Well, not brightness.
It all had to do about the square footage.
Okay.
The square footage of the sign.
So what I was going to ask Mario is the way that we describe the outer dimensions, that's used throughout most communities, am I right?
Yes, absolutely.
So we're...
And they are included in the zoning orders right now. It is, it is basically measuring typically the width and height around the, I'll just read it, it says, "Sign area is defined as the entire area within a rectangle or square including the extreme limits of the sign's structure, regardless of the shape of the structure, excluding the necessary supports or upgrades on which the sign is placed." And then there's graphics that show, whether it's channel cut, whether it's like a angled sign, it's just the height times the width. And I think that's, that definitely is the way that it's normally done.
So that's reasonable and customary for this area, and we're just using the same kind of dimensional descriptions that everybody uses in their planning, in their ordinances?
Yes. And I think what we've evolved, what's evolved over time is as I, we've been doing all these reviews, I've, you know, come to point out this distinction, as you've been talking about, Regina, is that on a box sign, when it's like this, and if the entire black was actually with white transmission, that's one method of area, but if, and the same letters were there, but there wasn't, it was just the letters that had the light transmission, then technically that's less area. It is technically less area in terms of amount of surface that's being illuminated and allowing for illumination. But I think that's actually, to me, the reason I point that out is because then that's a way that someone can have a 30-square-foot sign and it be, and it be internally illuminated, and it not be glaring, because by utilizing the channel cut letters, they, the business gets to maximize their sign area as they allow to, but then the village can have, can live with it because it's not a lot of these white boxes, like down the road that have, that are brought off that way. So then I think we were talking about, and that's where I, while we've done that as our approach, my notes I had down here was that you wanted to possibly make that recommendation of channel cut letters in the C1 corridor. I just wanted to make sure that we wanted to do that, because if you wanted to, you technically could, but I, my initial draft didn't include that suggestion, just to allow for people to have the most options available to them. But I can do whatever you like in terms of recommendation.
Justin?
So kind of like, I would like to kind of, the whole point of what we're trying to do is streamline the process to make it less, to make it more administrative and less planning commission, where they have to come to us. And the common theme around the whole thing, we're not looking to change the size, not looking to change the ordinance, we're looking to add the one change that is changing and giving us the power, and the community the power, to if a sign is too bright, it can be changed and dimmed without the sign coming down. And then also, so they don't, that we don't have to always approve it through the planning commission to help streamline the process for the applicant. So getting back to, maybe getting back on the trail is, let's look again at the wording that we're really only trying to add is about the luminance and adding the dimmer and the control.
As a, if I may, as a requirement. The rest of it may be a recommendation and a preference. Preferences change, preference can be somewhat subjective. I believe that's the original intent of what we're trying to do.
And I think the language about the zoning administrator having the, determining whether the, a planning commission would look at something, I think that allows for a lot more flexibility as well, which is what we talked about. So I like that part of the addition here, too.
I agree 100% closely. It gives the zoning administrator the discretion if they have any concerns to come to us, otherwise, so long as it meets the existing ordinance plus an amendment on a required automatic dimmer that addresses our fundamental concern, that was based on safety, quite frankly, along the road as being too bright as a distraction for the drivers. Justin?
So as I'm looking at some of the recommendations in blue and the changes that you made, I'm happy with number one. I think, or excuse me, I, B-I, I'm happy with. B2 or is, that is something I think is, I don't think that's a direction that we were specifically trying to head, which I would recommend that that be removed, unless you can illustrate or prove to me that that's not what we're trying to accomplish. And then the other additions that you have underneath that, I'm happy with as well, because once again, that gives us, or gives the administrative power to say, all right, we can accept it, or you know what, maybe we should put this to the planning commission to take a look at. So that would be my recommendation of this, and I would be happy with the way this, the way this new wording came out.
Yes, no?
I actually like B2. The reason being is, these guys could have walked away from the meeting last month, made a box sign, and made it, you know, all the background white, the letters this big, and that would have shown like the North Star. That's, I like the, I like them to require, or I like us to require a darker background because it would make it softer, that's just a personal opinion of mine. I drove through the village, there are a couple of signs, there are box signs that have the white behind them, and I think they really stick out negatively.
If I might say, I agree on an aesthetic basis, but in terms of allowing the applicant... If I might say, I agree on an aesthetic basis, but in, in terms of allowing the applicant as much leeway and then allowing the administration to interact with that according to the ordinance, I wonder if we could state this as a recommendation instead of as a requirement? And if that would be effective enough or not? Maybe it would not be. But it seems like it would be helpful for an applicant to know that that is the preference, but they actually do have a right to have a white sign if they want, as long as it's the internal illumination is controlled.
Because it, because we, we have something in there that, you know, requires a certain, what, lumens anyway? So I, and this is where it's like, I don't wanna go around like measuring lumens of everyone's sign, but I would go with the assumption that, you know, as long as in theory it meets that criteria, you know, the color of the sign really should matter.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Okay, so a couple things, there's a type of one A, A5, well, that was CO, we still written, and we need to get rid of that if we go through the process of changing it. I don't, CO part, but, so, B is referring to the C1 core and C1 transition. So that takes everything except for the, you know, the very counter wash and, and the very southern end and the first one or two at the very top. So if you wanna differentiate in the core, sort of downtown, where it's more box signs, we don't wanna strip mall look in the downtown, right? So if you wanted to differentiate between the C1 core, which this was in, and then the C1 transition is intensely south all the way through there, and East Street north.
Let's do that.
Maybe box signs are okay up there, but maybe they're not okay in the downtown core. But currently, this is listed in the one standard for both of those.
I'm glad you pointed that out, Joe, because that, that would be my intent. I wouldn't, I wouldn't touch the transition area, but the, the core downtown.
Actually, I actually like that too.
Are there any exceptions that would have to be made immediately for signs that would not follow this revised ordinance if we set that boundary? Do we know?
I don't know if there's any box signs in the C1 core right now.
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe.
The arcade.
Oh, that's an old existing one, yeah, the one, the, the.
Zeros?
Yeah.
Projecting sign?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the State Office on East Burdick. The, I think there's a, the State Office on East Burdick on the north side, but I think they have a darker background.
I think the bakery has a box sign as well.
But there's very few, and definitely, and to me, it does make more sense, because while I wasn't here when this ordinance was originally created, I do believe the whole intent of the design review was to make sure in the downtown core that signs are actually, I believe they were trying to go for a little bit more of historic character to match the buildings. However, you know, preferences and the, in the, of the council and planning, we should have evolved over time, and I think, based on what I've seen, it seems like people have become more accepting of the channel cut letters in the core. Even though they're modern and attractive, they're not historic, it's still, they are modern, they are attractive, generally speaking, at least that's how the current leadership is going for, so it seems like it makes sense. So it seems like, rather than, back in the day, I think the original intent was to have those, utilize goose neck, goose neck signs on, with, with no internal illumination, I think that's what they were trying to go, go to, say, hey, by right, you can have external illuminated goose neck signs, but if you want internal illumination, then you have to go through this process and.
And it's still the case.
Yeah.
It's still the case, right? If these were goose neck signs pointing down in there, they'd do whatever.
Correct, exactly. But I'll be honest, I don't think I've seen a goose neck sign, a new one come up in a very long time.
I'll be honest, I don't know what a goose neck sign is.
It's, it's like the goose neck and that light is here.
The light shines.
The light shines on the building.
You guys gotta, you gotta bring everyone in.
Oh, yeah.
Mario, I have a question.
Yes.
I'm, I'm hung up on the existing signs that would be in non-compliance with the revised ordinance. In, in the event that they were to replace the sign with as-is replacement, the sign is old or what have you, would they then be subject to this ordinance if the design itself does not change, but is damaged or broke and they're going to replace current?
Was there something in there, Mario, was there?
Yeah, let me check, because.
Like repair girls, case, or something like that?
Yeah, sometimes we have separate legal, not conforming standards for signs versus the other, the rest of the uses. But I don't think.
Real Estate One, just now, the Genesis Credit Union, they came to a couple years ago, that's an internally limited box sign, it was oversized, and they went to replace with another oversized one, and you guys said no, so I think they just put a few screws in it and left it. Because they were gonna have to come back with a smaller sign.
Is that a valid concern or not?
I front it. It is, because there's somebody, like, for instance, zeros. It's a projecting sign. Now, projecting signs, still, if it's internally limited, doesn't matter what type of sign it, if it's totally eliminated, triggers especially those, or the standards that you were thinking about creating for admission.
Because we don't wanna add more burden, right? That's in the, that's in the.
Yeah, exactly. What you're likely to do, if they have to go to a channel cut, for example, from a box sign.
Exactly.
They may have to do all kinds of work.
Yeah, then we've got half these signs with zip ties and self-tacks, together, we don't want that.
But actually, the, so we do have separate requirements for legally not conforming signs. Now, the, it goes through and it does say first that the intent is to eventually have all the legal not conforming signs go away. However, they are allowed to, to exist and remain. When, 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 if this were to be adopted, then all that are, that are not in compliance with whatever new standards you create, then they become legally not conforming. And then what I feel for that is always, we tell, I tell people, right, the, the, the villages decided to change the ordinance, but just because they changed the ordinance, we can't go through and make you.
Right.
Get rid of all your signs.
Right, right.
Because we give the village, the applicants the benefit of the doubt, that, that at the time of their sign installation, they were fully in compliance with what was on the books at that time. So they can maintain their legal, they can keep their, their, their sign, but it, so there's uses and, and lots of standards on it, but when it comes to signs, it does say specifically that a legal, not march shall not be expanded or changed to another non-conforming sign. It can't be relocated on the site, so they can pick it up and move it somewhere else. It can't, it cannot be structurally reconstructed so as to prolong the life of the sign, or as to change the shape, size, type, placement or design of the sign's structure apart, or so as to add illumination, so that technically they're not allowed to illuminate. And then, this one is, is probably where you address your concern, Scott. So it shall not be repaired or re-erected after being damaged if the repair or re-eraction of the sign within any twelve-month period would cost more than a fifty percent of the cost of an identical new sign. If deemed necessarily by the building official, though, the cost of an identical new sign shall be deemed as the average of the less than three cost estimates. Because what happens is some kind of, so once again, that, these are written, so the intent is to eventually have them go away, and as they deteriorate, they are intended to go away, so they can be maintained to a certain degree. It gets pretty elaborate in the here, but it's, because I'm sure Joe's unlikely to help me enforce this.
Story problem.
Exactly.
If this time has this sign.
It is, it is tough.
Would it, would it help if we produced a, a list of any box signs in the C1 core?
I don't know what you're gonna do with that information.
I mean, or, or do you guys wanna get in the weeds?
I think, once again, I think we're getting in the weeds again. This is not the, this, we're not looking to change the ordinance right now. I think, I think this is the thing, is that we're not here to change the ordinance, what we're here to is, is to help the current existing ordinance get streamlined, so applicants don't have to come here in front of the planning commission and get their sign approved. This is the thing, it's, it's not our job to tell the businesses what their signs are supposed to look like, I think.
Agreed.
In the case of, the business wants to have the very best sign that fits the community, that they possibly can have, because the more attractive it is, the more they're gonna, more it'll bring in people. They don't want something that is gonna be, a business owner doesn't want something that's gonna be super offensive to everybody, because it, it detours from the business. They wanna have something thin. So I think talking about the, if it's box, if it's not, if it's this, once again, gets us out of what the whole point of why we want to just change this one very specific thing. And if, in the future, we're really looking at this and really want to change what our core is and what our transition box signs is, that's where we take it up as another opportunity, come at it, at, at another time and say, all right, we need to completely look at or reevaluate our existing sign ordinance and maybe change it then.
Joe, currently, if someone applies for a sign, there is no administrative review right now, is that right? It always comes?
There is administrative due, with the exception of internally limited.
Only internally lim, okay.
Those are the ones that are coming to you.
Okay.
For those.
So you have.
Try and layer it out, out so they don't have to.
So you, potentially, you have the ability now to just work out whatever with the applicant?
If they conform with the ordinance, then they're approved.
Okay, so what, what, for clarification then, adding this language is basically not changing your role in that way, it's just, it's giving the applicant a few other things that they can work out with you.
It's basically saying, we've seen what you've done in the last two or three years, use that standard and prove these without having them go through this extra hoops and loops and dragging you down into proof sign. The only devil advocate point I throw out here, Justin, I agree with you almost all the time, is what happens if the next six signs coming downtown, they want box signs, they look okay, but they're box signs? And we said, well, we can't tell them no. That, that's the only.
That's my question.
Because we, we can, I understand where you're at, it's, it's up to them to choose the nice and, and most people are gonna choose the nice and sign, but if I get a box sign for twenty-five hundred or a channel cut for forty-five hundred, and I'm a young person trying to start a business, they may opt for the other one.
I, I agree, because that's exactly, that's exactly what this ordinance says, is it actually takes it out of the hands of the planning commission, which, you know, but.
Which I'm all for, but.
Which is, no, I, I don't, I don't disagree, but I think that, I, I'm, I'm going with the assumption that the historical reason that they chose, that they put this in place was so that they could review to make sure that it does fit within, you know, village standards or what we would like to see and those kinda things, but then, you know, and this is why it's like, I, I really don't like B, you know, item two, because now all of a sudden, I'm telling you what colors it needs to be. So I understand, but that's actually one of the concerns that I do have, because you're right, it, it can be, as long as it fits it, you know, it's as white as white can be with, you know, one word on it and you're in.
But if it meets the illumination requirements, what's the issue?
Well, well, but, right, so I'm just saying, like, this is, I think I understand why the ordinance was put in as it is, but I do think to a certain degree, there's some unintended consequences of skipping it. I mean, personally, I like the idea of letting people choose what they wanna do and those kinda things, but I think we also have to be cognizant of the fact that you are giving up all rights to, you know, having any opinion or say as to what this is gonna look like, which is, that'd be something.
Let me make a point of clarification. In section one B, where it states, any applicant may request a formal review.
Yes, I agree with that, yes.
It also states, the zoning administrator shall have the discretion to require a review with the planning commission. If you see six in a row, someone's going to say, timeout, we need to then, at my discretion, assuming I am aforementioned administrator zoning, that you need to go to the planning commission for review.
And there's your fail, Steve, I guess, right there.
Yeah.
Well, but let me take that one step further, but if our ordinance allows a box sign to be with a white background with one letter on it that's dark, if that's allowed.
It's still at the discretion for that, for the administrator to come?
Well, yeah, they can come here, but if it's allowed, how can we?
Can we still?
It's allowed right now. Well, yeah, which I think that we should close that, personally. I mean, you know, you, you guys may not, but, you know, going to other cities, you know, going to Madison Heights and you see those, you know, nothing against Madison Heights, but you, there are a lot of signs, box signs, that, you know, are illuminated with white backgrounds and they stick out like a sore thumb. I, I just don't think that in our core area, that's the kinda sign that we wanna have.
Joe, or, Tom, can you give one example of a current sign like that today? Or it's a hypothetical that you want to protect for in the future?
Hypothetical, I would, we, I mean, we, I mean, the arcade sign is that type of a sign. Now, it, it's not, you know, super illuminated, but if, if you get, you know, a business like what just came before us, it's a pretty big area, and, and they could've walked away, like I said, last month, come back with, without coming to us and said, okay, I'm gonna put in a box sign with a white background, and I think that would've stuck out.
The smoothie place.
I'd like to make like three comments, if we can, maybe, there's three things that I've heard a couple, like, sometimes, sometimes the background about the, I, I do know the background of why the illumination was put on was specifically so they could help control the light downtown, because there was a very specific business that did come in and their light was extremely bright, and they didn't have controls, and it was a letter, channel letter, so it was channel letter, it was super bright, and that's why they put it on here. Previous planning commission also wanted more control over that. So that was, that was the reason why that was specifically put in, so they could have more control into looking at what people's signs, so they were not too bright. Now, so that was maybe one thing. Next thing is, we're talking about, Tom, you're talking about historical signs, we want downtown to look historical. That zero sign would technically be historical, because it's been there for sixty, seventy years, give or take, it's been there for really, so technically, that's even, the box sign is technically even more historical than it is the channel cut letter. So the thing that we're talking about is, once again, we're getting back to the point of, we are making our personal preference, preferences on some of these things where it's not the point of what we're doing right this minute. What we're doing right this minute is talking about the light and illumination for this existing ordinance. If we want to bring up the idea of changing the, this, the sign, if we want box or letters, that's at, I would say, at a different meeting that we come to and talk and discuss. This right here will solve our, what, the issue that we have on the plate today, changing the historical signs for the future, or what that would, would be, I think, at another time.
I will say that we have had tension about, like, you know, shouldn't we be looking at this for aesthetic reasons, shouldn't we have input? That has been an issue, so we've been ambivalent about that, but that is a very subjective situation, and I think.
Yes.
I agree with Justin that what we're trying to do is say, this reflects something that's actually improving on the situation we have now, if it isn't good enough, we can come back to this and, and create a new ordinance that's more restrictive, if that's the case. So, and I, I personally, currently, our current zoning administrator is somebody who understands enough about what we're looking for, that if there's a concern, I think it'll get flagged and it'll come to us. So I trust that process.
I, I like that, because I think initially, it's like, well, do we want to not have control over what our town looks like, but considering, it doesn't necessarily have to come to us, because we already have someone looking at it from initially, either that person can request something new, or the applicant can request something, and it, you know, but it also addresses the brightness with new technologies and those kinda things, I think it makes it, in my two cents, very simple, cut, very straightforward.
I'd like to make one more comment about, about here, or, we have administrators that are in the office that are making these, making these recommendations. We gotta remember, they're on our team as well, they're on the front lines, their objective is to make it just as great as we are. So they're not, they're seeing this stuff, it's just to make it easier for the applicant when things are in and the code is actually met. So as long as it's followed and it's, once again, our administrators are all, are frontline, and they have the best intentions for the village as well.
Tom, one comment?
Yeah, so this, this. So just my understanding, and I agree with, with your comment about our administrators, I have no issue with that, but I wanna give them, well, let me back up. So the, the signs that just came before us today, last month, is it true that even, so if they came to you, Joe, and said, I want a box sign, white background, and it says ABC Company on it? Now, you can ask them to come here, and we can say, ah, we really don't like that design, but they could say, thanks very. but they could say, thanks for your input, but your ordinance says I can have that, and walk away, and they could have had the box sign with a white background.
As long as you hit the square footage limits, and the dimmer, so, yes.
That's, that's my concern.
Are we still trying to get into the size issue? Because I think actually, at the end of the day, this.
Size, no matter what, outside the size limits, they have to comply with such a use.
Regardless. Okay, so this is just to meet, within the limits. Okay.
Tom, are you worried about being too bright? Or just too white?
I mean, just like.
Just sticking out like a sore thumb.
So would it be sticking out like too much of a sore thumb, because it's, once again, bright, making it bright would make it stick out. So let's say if it was purple, and the only way it might stick out would be if it's, once again, too bright. But that's the whole point of the dimmer, maybe. So let's say it's all white, and that's just your logo. Would it stick out too much? I'm just, I'm trying to get your thoughts on that.
With the size of the light.
Is that, it would just not, is the brightness of it would make it stick out too much?
Yeah, I think so.
Mr. Chair, the example Mario tossed off earlier, that like 102 south, whatever, on the west, on the east side, where they pose in transport, wherever, when they came, they had bulbs, and there was going to be a white, like blue letters, and they flipped around in blue with white letters, and they were happy with that. And it still shows, but that's, that's example of how limited it can make a difference. You have three, two square foot of white letters versus 19 square foot of whiteness. That's.
Yeah.
But, that's just a, and that's the thing, you guys have been working at creating the cookie cutter the last couple of years. I understand what the cookie cutter is. So as we're talking something about this, we would say, look, I really don't like to see those. It would be better if you had this. It would be better if we prefer you have that. And if they're hard set on, no, I want a bright yellow sign, that's 30 square feet with a bright orange letter in the middle of it, this is for you guys.
Yep. If I may.
But, but.
Dave, do you have any comments on the discussion?
You guys got an interesting flow going on here. Just a couple of comments. One is on the channel sign application of this potential illumination sensor. Are they going to have the requirement to put a sensor on each letter? You know, how would that work?
No, we just, one sensor, we control all the lighting for all the sign.
Okay, so, okay.
They're interconnected, yeah.
I understand, interconnected, so the assumption would be that they're all illuminating about the same.
Don't play, don't mix light bulbs. You know that.
I never have. The other thing, the other question I have, so for your historical part of your district, are there design, any kind of design guidelines, anyone, that kind of stuff?
That's why I went to the planning commission.
Because, you know, like you pointed out, these channel cut are more modern, but, you know, if you want to maintain the integrity of your historical district, do you really want modern-looking signs in your historical district?
Joe, you want to comment?
There are some, like, if you have lintels or architectural features on there, you can't put a box sign over top of that. There are some architectural design features built in the, the Paramount improvements down there, one that came up a few years ago, that they had to change the shape and location of the sign to not cover some of the actual items.
So they had to do something in order to fit it.
Yeah, they, they.
To the existing architecture.
They calmed it down, they proportioned it to fit one flat state, but that, that was written in the ordinance already.
Okay.
Whether it's internally illuminated or not.
And I know we're talking a lot about white, but what if someone was to put in a fluorescent component? I mean, that's usually more gone than, you know, white. I mean, if it meets the illuminance requirements, is that a problem?
And is a problem defined as a personal opinion?
It's a personal opinion, is it stand out or not? And businesses want it to be seen, so.
Yeah, what?
But if the zoning person too, you know, is like, no, no, I think we're at that point, yeah.
That's true, and I think what we've been trying to do with our recent recommendations is, there's the one aspect of glare and safety and distraction to drivers. On the other side is the, you know, basically the subjective, either need or aesthetic for calling attention. Because in the end, you know, the business wants to call attention, and whether they do or don't be very garish about it or not, it's their own personal preference. So those are, those are two different things. I think like Justin has been saying, you have the one thing where we're just trying to automate it, so as long as they address the safety issue and minimize glare, in theory, at 100 can dale, that'll be the one thing. And the other thing is the, more of the aesthetic appearance. And I will say that, you know, even with recent Supreme Court decisions, you know, the community can regulate the time, the place, and the manner in which the signage is done. So you can regulate this, and I think the way, and whether now is the time or not, it's up to you. We can do that in a later time. But I think one of the issues could be, you know, the idea about the C1 core, because while I know it's addressing a second issue, but I get that, it does seem to me like if we said no box signs in the C1 core, that's one direction. I don't know if that's the direction you guys want to go, but that's one direction. The other is just, like I said, keeping it focused on the, on the safety issue.
Are signs allowed with animations?
No, absolutely.
And that's somewhere in some ordinance?
Yes, it is, absolutely. Even if they have a, what's called an electronic message center, or basically an LCD, LED sign, they can't have any flashing, moving, you know, graphics and that sort of thing. It's just a transition. It's allowed, basically, it's a way for people, from regulation standpoint, it's a way for people to have multiple messages in the same space.
Okay, so that's in a different ordinance.
That's in this other.
Next. One idea that I have about the core and requirements is that we could have language here that says that box signs shall not be used in the C1 core without a design review by the planning commission.
Leslie, I believe we can do that. I would suggest we consider that in a phase two.
Well, but since we're changing this language right now, it wouldn't be hard to insert that particular point.
It is true, and that's the thing, is that this will eventually need to have a public hearing here, and then it will need to go to the council for their final approval. So it's just a matter of, sometimes we do have ordinances, and sometimes, on the other side, I have ordinances on a wide range of issues, just so that way you can try and knock them all out once. But you don't have to, you can definitely do it one at a time, but then just understand that the next, the next thing to do it, we would have to do another public hearing in another.
And this is going to lead, this is, now, let's lead into aligning on the actual next steps. We've talked, and I'm not intending to dampen creative thought by any stretch. However, I also want to try to move the needle forward and understand what our next steps are. We're not going to solve subjectivity here, nor is that the intent. So, we have a second draft of an amendment to the zoning ordinance. We've had a lot of good discussion. I'll state that for the record. We now, Joe and Vicki, I'm looking to you for guidance then on next steps. We then need to make a motion, correct me if these next statements are inaccurate and interject at any moment. We would then make a moment, or a motion for Mario to prepare a final draft. Could be what is reflected here, could be then a motion to make amendments, in which we will then have a final review prior to calling a public hearing, prior to then making a motion for recommendation for village council approval.
Yes, and to your point, you could act, and do it on one step with what's in front of you, and say, have it set to public hearing for next month, planning commission meeting. You could make a couple tweaks to this now, say, make those tweaks, and make it next month, planning commission meeting, or either ask for tweaks and additions, and then discuss it more next meeting, which then would force the public hearing to subsequent meeting.
I, I'm not sure how we do this. I like, I like the C1 idea, just because it, for, at the moment, it maintains the control and integrity that the council and the committee is used to having within, I'm assuming C1's interior downtown.
The core, yes.
The core, and I, I don't think that would be, be too, I don't care for. So, and again, I, those would be the two, the two recommendations if we're going to, you know, because I don't really want to rehash all this. So I don't know how we do this part.
I can streamline this and say, look, if you adopted this right now, we would just tell you, we're bringing all box signs to you.
Right.
In the C1 core. That's the, the discretion and judgment that we would use.
Okay.
Without having to be.
Without it having to be specified in the ordinance.
Right.
And, and it's not there. And if you guys, look, Joe, this is what we brought to you, stop bringing it to me, okay, fine. But it's there for, while you work through the thoughts and process of, okay, do we want to make that amendment or not? Is this working or not?
That's great. I just would hate for.
Can you state that one more time?
Right now, we could approve a box sign in the C1 core in transition.
Yep.
Or we can, we can suggest that they use channel letters, but they're much nicer looking and attractive.
Attractive to the business.
There's discretion, that's written in here now, that they could either request coming through.
Correct.
Or the zoning manager could.
Correct.
And if they're bringing us a box sign in the C1 core, I could say right now, see what, for those who are just not comfortable approving, we're going to take them to the planning commission.
Okay, I like that.
So why don't we just add that into the ordinance?
Well, it's a functional thing. It's implementation, it's not being regulated specifically.
I don't know if you guys are all in agreement, but that has to be written in the words at the time. So what I'm saying is, we could.
Because you're not going to be here, you may not be here, you know, forever, so the next person, so the next person may have a different view.
Over the next six months, or 12 months, whatever, we could function in that way.
We're just looking to be consistent.
Yes.
Either one way or another, no matter who, no matter who's running the show.
Which does not necessarily need to be defined as such in ordinance.
I could just tell you, that's the discretion we would use.
Nor does that need to be documented formally anywhere, quite frankly. It's how we would operate under the administrative.
Administration.
Review process as defined here. Therefore, what I'm going to do is make a motion for Mario to amend these final, let me rephrase that, a motion to conduct a thorough grammar review of these amendments, including but not limited to section E5, and a revision from C-0 to C1. And removal of all defined strike-through and ordinance changes in blue for, or in alignment with a then final review, ultimately accepting what is drafted here as a final review. Does that make sense?
Doing that.
This, let me, let me then elaborate. This document, as it is written, similar to any legal document, shows amendments and changes which would not be presented to the public, which would not be presented to.
A clean version, in other words.
Therefore, we need a cleaned document, all black color font, with a revision and amendment to section E15, and a correction for C0, change it to C1, for our then, published for a public hearing.
So basically, take what we have here, make it properly formatted, and then move forward.
Correct.
And final.
Correction that we have discussed, and then, and by removing the C0, the C0 or whatever.
That is my motion.
Excuse me, did, just for clarification about the definitions, we were talking about definitions, and was it, did I hear you correctly that our current ordinance does not define channel cut or block or box sign specifically?
Correct.
Because I would like to see that change made as well, because of the language here.
Doesn't that, isn't that?
Does that make sense?
I made a motion. It needs either be second, and then we vote, and everyone votes no, in order to then remove that motion from.
Okay.
The table, and then we reopen.
That was my discussion on that motion.
Then we reopen for, then we reopen another discussion for amendment prior to a motion.
So we're taking everything as it is and saying, please rewrite this formally, in the format and all the wording as it is, maybe changing some words, or no?
To reiterate and to clarify, the motion is to approve these amendments and to request a final draft with the, with a change to E14 as a correction from C0 to C1, which is currently inaccurately stated. All other language as written stays. Madam Secretary, a roll call going on that motion.
Bailey?
No. No.
No?
Oh, no.
No?
No.
Schultz?
Yes.
William?
Yes.
Remember?
No.
The motion does not carry, which aligns with previous comment, because now we open up for discussion or an initial amendment. Therefore, so.
So I think what I, I would like to make a motion to.
Before you make a motion, what were you looking at doing first?
So, in addition to these changes, as we've discussed, to add definitions for channel cut and box signs into the ordinance where the definitions area is.
And is that not already defined here?
No, Mario said it was not defined.
So Mario, no, right now, there are no definitions that get that detailed for channel cut or box sign.
Or is it just pictures?
There are some pictures that show it, but it doesn't.
It's not the text definition isn't there.
Is there an industry standard definition, and those in industry, do they clearly understand the difference? Therefore, it's not needed in our ordinance.
There isn't an industry standard language, but there is, I would say colloquially within the industry, they know that each one is pretty obvious.
Or the ordinance is written in layman terms or in technical terms, that's, which, I mean, it's one more line item, so I don't think it's that big of a deal. But, again, the I, yes, the question for clarity.
Sure.
And that was the only reason.
Well, if you needed clarity, there's potential that a person, a member of the public or a business owner might also appreciate that clarity. That is the only reason I brought this up.
If you remove BII, do you need definitions for channel cut and box designs in this ordinance?
Which one?
BII, where references, 1B, 1BII, where, that seems to be the only place that seems to reference a particular sign type. If you remove that, do you need to add definitions of channel cut, box signs, maybe other versions as well?
I don't think it could hurt to at least have it.
If I can give a, an example, not intended to be sarcastic, if there is an ordinance regarding the material used in a driveway, do we need to define concrete versus asphalt?
For those, no, because those are, but what it is, is use a dictionary term, not to get into weeds on that, but technically, there are specific design standards, engineering construction standards for what is by two minutes asphalt versus concrete.
My example was. The position that those in signs are.
Right.
That industry, they know the clear definition of box versus channel.
I would agree with that statement, yes.
Okay. I would say, my personal thing is, no, we don't need definitions.
Correct.
Just excuse my ignorance. But I, I mean, really, at the end of the day, I disagreed with it, just because I really don't want to see B2.
And they're going to come to us, and they're going to talk to us, and we're going to tell them, and we explain to them.
Yeah, I mean, at the end of the day, we're still going to have the preference, but the idea of kind of formalizing, you can't have a certain design, I, I don't think is a good choice.
Yeah, I agree. I think B2, you're trying to drive businesses down a different path, and I don't think that's right.
That was the only thing I disagreed with.
I also agree that B2 should be removed. That was one of my first thoughts.
Removed, or do we replace shall with a term like preferred or recommended? It is recommended that box signs utilized.
I mean, do we have a recommendation list regardless?
Shall means it must.
Yeah, correct.
Shall utilized.
So if we rephrase that, it is preferred. So if we rephrase that, it is preferred or encouraged or recommended, not required, that box signs utilize background, except.
But I would say if this is an ordinance, it really is about what the rule is and everything else is going to be left to the interpretation.
Same thing, like we would like it to look old tiny.
Therefore, B2 should be stricken.
Yeah.
Altogether.
Yeah. I personally would like that, yes.
I li- I, I like that also. But it was a nice thought.
Were you in discussion? I didn't-
I'll, I'll give this another one.
In jut- I respect your thoroughness.
Thank you.
I do believe, un- unless someone wants to interject, we'll give this another shot. Um, we'll, I will make a motion to uh, to appro- I guess it's approve, to approve the draft zoning ordinance amendment with the following changes. E15, C0 replaced with C1.
If it's to be removed, sorry.
Rem- stricken.
It's something that doesn't exist.
C0 stricken and section E1B2 stricken. To then be presented for a public hearing.
At the next planning commission meeting.
At the next planning commission meeting.
I second.
Madam Secretary, a roll call vote, please.
Okay, Schultz?
No.
Wagner?
Yes.
Knock?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Hylock?
Yes.
Ian Ballard?
Okay.
So does that mean we're going to have a public hearing for meeting after?
I believe so.
It would be the next available, next available because-
Depends, because that would get the paper, get your fifteen day notice and stuff.
Yeah.
Take more than likely than that.
Okay. Deep breath and, okay, um, it's fair to assume that there is no public comment at this moment. Um, consultant and administration comments? Mario?
Deputy Morris?
Good.
Um, I just want to say, uh, Leslie and I met yesterday and we're talking about um the landscape plan for Big D. Uh, they, they recommended, they requested some amendments to it over the summer, back and forth. There was a little too much of a change for us to administrate to do it. He suggested we at least contact one of the planning commissioners about landscaping and who told? Leslie.
For obvious reasons.
And she's been very helpful. Her and I met yesterday. I forwarded the recommendations for the different plans and stuff like that. And Mario was like, "I already had, had some changes or amendments initiated." Um, and to try to help them get going.
Good.
Sounds like a good way to go. It's administrative plus.
Yes.
Yep.
Do we have any updates from the Oxford Township Planning Commission?
No updates for me.
Okay, thank you.
Did you ever, a question for you, did they ever um finalize the uh, the new zone master plan?
Um, it's, it's gone, it's either gone through its second reading or it has been approved that month. I don't remember which.
Okay.
I'd have to come back. As another one has been in board for a couple of years.
Uh, ZBA, okay. DDA, Joe, any updates?
They're not doing it.
No.
It's a sidewalk, baby.
The sidewalks going on in downtown Detroit.
Okay.
They're, they're quite long, they don't forget. They're bred for, you know, some, some speeds and other stuff.
Excellent.
Same.
The witches, the witches can ride their birds over the hall.
Oh, that's probably right.
It's fine. We'll be all right.
As a final commissioner comment, Dave, welcome.
Thank you.
And with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Or?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Ford, yeah, I'm sorry.
Mr. Schultz.
Thank you.
Yep. We shall adjourn at eight fifteen.